Morning. We're gonna get started, we're gonna have a long day today. To give our invitation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Hiska? Shawn Hiska, I'm sorry. Pastor of the First Presbyterian Church. He is here today as my guest, and I would ask all members and guests to please rise.
Is this Shawn?
Please proceed.
It was Fred, so I wasn't sure. So thank you President Clark for the invitation to come before this cherished body this morning as a resident of your 5th district. Yet with the multiple hats I wear, I actually touch almost every district of this beloved city. I live in your 5th. My church, First Presbyterian Church in Kensington, is in Councilman Squilla's 1st district. And then with my full-time job, as if I'm not busy enough, at Presby's Inspired Life, we have an affordable housing community for older adults, I think in almost every single district of this beloved city. So with that, and with all of you who serve the residents of your specific districts or at large, let us now go before our divine Creator, seeking her guidance. Join with me please in prayer. Let us pray. Loving, life-sustaining, and boundary-breaking God, we call upon you this day to shine your light in front of these your servants, in this our home, the city of brotherly and sisterly love. We ask that you empower these councilmembers to enact laws and ordinances that are just and fair to all residents, whether young or old, whether they and their family have lived in Philly for their entire lives, or whether they are just moving into the city today. Grant them the wisdom to do what's right in your eyes, even if it's unpopular, especially in protecting and preserving our history, the stories of the residents long gone, whose legacies are too quickly demolished. Guide their discernment and actions to protect the rights of all Philadelphians, no matter their race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, or gender. Support them in meeting the needs of the residents of the city, no matter what neighborhood they call home, what job they have, or whether they voted for them or not. Strengthen this council and every single one of their staff members, as they answer calls and emails from concerned residents seeking relief and liberation. Let them never forget your call to protect the vulnerable in our midst, the widows, the orphans, and especially our seniors. Provide all the members who serve in this council listening ears to hear one another without judgment or preconceived notions. Give them the ability to truly listen to one another, especially to those who disagree with them, because there just might be something to learn. Help them check their own egos in order for them to lead selflessly with humility. Oh Lord, our Creator, our Sustainer, our help in ages past, and our hope for years to come, fill us all with your peace and love that only you can give in this upcoming Memorial Day weekend as we bring out our grills and enjoy fellowships over barbecues, or we rest our feet in the cool waters of the ocean. Let us never forget the stories of the people who gave the ultimate sacrifice, of laying down their lives for their friends, and attempting to bring peace to this chaotic world. May we all attempt to shine your love and your peace in our lives, in our neighborhoods, and in every moment. It is in your holy and powerful name we ask all these things. Amen.
Thank you so much Pastor for those inspiring words. Thank you, and again Reverend, thank you for those inspiring words. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 16, 2019, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you Ms. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 16, 2019 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved in probably second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 16, 2019 stand approved. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you Ms. President. On behalf of the majority, a leave of absence is requested for Councilwoman Bass.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, leave shall be granted, let the record reflect that. Chair recognizes Councilman...oh.
Good morning. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leaves of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. This time I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome, and I want to thank everyone for coming down today to witness their government in action. We genuinely hope that you have a good stay here today, a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you very much. This time I would like to recognize our good friend, State Representative Jason Dawkins over there, he's... (applause) As we affectionately called him, J. Doc, kind of reminds us of Brian Dawkins a little bit, you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Representative, thank you for coming down, doing that great work up there in Harrisburg, we appreciate you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you Ms. President. On behalf of Councilwoman Gim, who voices a little weak today, I don't, couldn't imagine why, the, we, I want to acknowledge in the audience right back here, 8th graders from Kirkbride Elementary School, who are here watching government in action.
Stand up guys, so we can see.
Stand up.
Stand up. Thank you so much for coming down, appreciate you being here. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Council President, thank you very, very much, and you've always been so welcoming to young students to learn a little bit more about the government, and asking them to come down, well I actually got a school to come down. And I just want to take a time and moment to recognize and welcome the 2nd grade class from the Philadelphia Academy Charter School. They have been studying government this spring, and are joining us today to observe their city government in action, because of the words that you speak every week. And they are taught by Mrs. Doherty, Mrs. Wright, and Mrs. Markoff. And will, will these young students please rise?
Stand up guys, stand up.
There's 80 of them! (applause)
Yeah.
Council President, thank you so much, and thanks also for your leadership, and really allowing them to be here, but also promoting them to come here, talking about it every week.
Thank you Councilman, I can see that they're learning how to get engaged early on, that's great. Good stuff. Thank you, thank you guys for coming down this evening. Alright. Thank you, thank you Councilman, and thank you young folks. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Dom, who presented resolution recognizing the Drug Enforcement Administration with Assistant Special Agent in Charge Shawn Ellerman, and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Dom, we have Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Green, Councilman O., Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilman Taubenberger, Squilla, Jones, and Councilman Johnson.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're acknowledging and recognizing the Drug Enforcement Administration's 360-degree strategy and innovative three-pronged approach to combating heroin, opioid use through law enforcement, diversion, and community outreach.
I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege, because when I got elected to council, I never thought I was going to have to play such a role in public safety in the community. And the DEA in particular, with our office, and the folks not only that are here with us this morning, but some of their field agents, have really adopted the 7th Councilmatic District. They have helped us with bookbag drives and community events, and really have broken down the barriers so that the community feels like they care, and that they can improve their quality of life. So I personally want to thank everyone in the DEA's office for your support and collaboration all throughout the year, but in particularly as we deal with this very complex and complicated situation around the opioid crisis. And while it's a citywide approach, your work, particularly with young people and partnering with the school district and others around prevention and education, is very important and very much appreciated. So, whereas the Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA 360, is a comprehensive approach tackling the cycle of violence and addiction generated by the link between drug cartels, violent gangs, and the rising problem of prescription opioid inherent abuse in US cities, and...
Whereas DEA rolled out the 360 strategy in November 2015 in Pittsburgh, together with the US Attorney and state and local partners.
Since that time, DEA has deployed the strategy in other pilot cities, and is using the three-pronged approach in all DEA field divisions, and...
Whereas since the implementation of the program in Philadelphia in January 2017, the DEA has partnered with and supported the Gurney Street Project, the Mural Arts, Philadelphia's Kensington Storefront, and Porchlight Program, and...
The DEA has also sponsored youth City of Philadelphia dance programs at elementary schools around Kensington, as well as other events across Philadelphia, and...
Whereas the DEA has joined forces with diversity, discovery, education to create Operation Prevention, a comprehensive, no-cost, science-based program for young people ages 8 through 18 to combat opioid misuse.
Whereas Operation Prevention includes digital classroom lessons, a parent toolkit, Spanish resources, video challenge, on-demand virtual field trips, and student learning module, and...
Whereas education prevention includes, whoop, whereas education prevention is one of the many ways to combat the opioid crisis, we encourage a collaborative partnership between DEA 360 and other programs currently providing prevention education.
Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Philadelphia hereby acknowledges and recognizes the Drug Enforcement Administration's 360-degree strategy and innovative three-pronged approach to combating heroin, opioid use through law enforcement, diversion, and community outreach.
Thank you, and the Chair recognizes Mr. Ellerman for remarks.
First of all, I want to say thank you to all our partners. It's been successful the last two years. The numbers are out, they're not great, but we have a lot to be thankful for. That's because we judge victory by one person at a time. Statistics always run almost everything in federal government, and I'm sure in state government too, and local government, but we can't look at this problem with statistics, we have to look at them as human beings. DEA V L is one thing, we fight domestic cartels in the United States, and we fight foreign cartels overseas, that are plaguing our citizens throughout our country. That will not stop, we will continue the fight, but now we'll do it with a lot more friends. Thank you.
Congratulations, Council of Bides. Thank you, congratulations.
Whereas education prevention includes, whoop, whereas education prevention is one of the many ways to combat the opioid crisis, we encourage a collaborative partnership between DEA 360 and other programs currently providing prevention education.
Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Philadelphia hereby acknowledges and recognizes the Drug Enforcement Administration's 360-degree strategy and innovative three-pronged approach to combating heroin, opioid use through law enforcement, diversion, and community outreach.
Thank you, and the Chair recognizes Mr. Ellerman for remarks.
First of all, I want to say thank you to all our partners. It's been successful the last two years. The numbers are out, they're not great, but we have a lot to be thankful for. That's because we judge victory by one person at a time. Statistics always run almost everything in federal government, and I'm sure in state government too, and local government, but we can't look at this problem with statistics, we have to look at them as human beings. DEA V L is one thing, we fight domestic cartels in the United States, and we fight foreign cartels overseas, that are plaguing our citizens throughout our country. That will not stop, we will continue the fight, but now we'll do it with a lot more friends. Thank you.
Congratulations, Council of Bides. Thank you, congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilmembers Johnson and Jones, who do a presentation on my behalf to celebrate the 138th Convention of the United Supreme Council Ancient and Accepted Scottish Rites of Freemasonry, Prince Hall, Northern Jurisdiction, with illustrious Melvin J. Bazemore, 33rd Degree, and the Sovereign Grand Commander, United Supreme Council, New Jersey, and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium.
Thank you Mr. President, on your behalf.
You're welcome.
Behold, how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. It is my distinct honor and privilege and pleasure to be honoring and celebrating the 138th Convention of the United Supreme Council Ancient and Accepted Scottish Rite of Freemasonry, Prince Hall affiliation, Northern Jurisdiction, United States of America Incorporated. Alright? The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and honored to recognize the Pennsylvania Council of Deliberation on the occasion of its hosting of the 138th Convention of the United States Supreme Council to be held in Philadelphia, May 23, 2019, through May 27, 2019. Whereas the Scottish Rite was introduced to the United States in 1801, and subsequently to Prince Hall's fraternity in 1820. In 1881, the United States Supreme Council in the Northern Jurisdiction was established, and began to convene every third year in various major cities with a very, with every third year convening in Philadelphia. And whereas today, this proud organization has grown in strength and in size of its contribution to society, it is over 130 years old. Y'all look real good for 130. And draws its membership from 20 northern states, and well into the Bahamas, Canada, Asia, and Europe. And whereas since 1881, the core objective and guiding principle of the United States Supreme Council Northern Jurisdiction has remained steadfast and unshaken, perpetually striving to make good men better. I like that, to make good men better. The immeasurable value of the United Supreme Council can be seen most readily in the emphasis that members pursue endeavors such as personal motivation, human improvement, belief in the supreme being, love of family, devotion to country, and charity to all, and...
It's truly an honor and a privilege to have this opportunity to present this acknowledgement with my colleague Councilman Curtis Jones. I've been a part of his fraternity for more than 20 years, and it's definitely helped me become a better man, but also I'm proud as a councilperson to have the opportunity to represent the headquarters in the 2nd Councilmatic District. Whereas the personal and fraternal development of the members of the United Supreme Council can easily be documented due to a distinguished history of service to others, among many examples, they proudly award scholarships to need-based college students in each of the 26 orients that comprise the Northern Jurisdiction, and... Whereas in the city of Philadelphia alone, the United Supreme Council operates two housing facilities for low and moderate income senior citizens, collectively comprising of 234 units in the 2nd Councilmatic District. Moreover, the United Supreme Council annually contributes more than $125,000 to various community organizations, such as the NAACP, and its Legal Defense Fund, the Urban League, the United Negro College Fund, and others. Taking great pride in supporting women and children, Prince Hall Scottish Rite Masonry annually provides resources to widows and orphans, and celebrates the complimentary endeavors of the Ladies of the Golden Circle, an auxiliary organization made up the wives, mothers, sisters, and daughters of its membership. And whereas while the aforementioned is merely a snapshot of its positive impacts on the lives of its members, their families, and their surrounding communities, it is without question that Prince Hall Scottish Rite Masonry's positive impact on the world will continue to be immeasurable for generations to come. Therefore by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to honor and celebrate the United Supreme Council Ancient and Accepted Scottish Rite of Freemasonry, Prince Hall affiliation, Northern Jurisdiction of the United States of America Incorporated, on the occasion of its 138th Convention of the United Supreme Council. We in this council extend this sincere respect and admiration of this legislative body and say congratulations.
And the Chair recognizes the illustrious Melvin J. Bazemore for remarks.
Good morning.
Morning.
To Council President Darrell Clark, to the Councilman who represents our district, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, to all of the other distinguished Councilmen in, under the sound of my voice, it is indeed an honor and a privilege to stand before you on this morning, to represent the United Supreme Council of the Ancient and Accepted Scottish Rite of Freemasonry, Prince Hall affiliated for the Northern Jurisdiction. As has been stated, we are in your beautiful city to host our 138th annual session. Coming into this city this week will be members from our organization from over 26 countries, and three different continents, the Bahamas, Europe, Asia. We are here, and we want you to know that we are here, representing you as a city where our headquarters is located at 1514-20 Fixwater Street, in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection. Thank you for welcoming us to your beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council of Bides. Thank you, Councilmember. Again, thank you, gentlemen, and congratulations one more time. Really appreciate you being here today. For our next order of business is communications. The Chair requested the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. And Mr. Decker, if you will please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am pleased to advise you that on May 22, 2019, I signed the following bill which was passed by Council at its session on May 9, 2019, Bill Number 180976. And I am submitting here with for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the South Central Urban Manuela area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1035 South Sixth Street, 1037 South Sixth Street, and 1028 South Fairhill Street. And a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Kensington North of Lehigh redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 2250 East Cambria Street. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer to enter into a provider agreement with U.S. Bank National Association for the provision of custodial banking services to the city. And an ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant, to file applications to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and to apply for a Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant. And an ordinance authorizing the Streets Commissioner and Procurement Commissioner to enter into an agreement with Waste Management of Pennsylvania Incorporated, pursuant to which Waste Management will receive municipal solid waste to be collected by or on behalf of the city and transfer and dispose of that municipal solid waste. And an ordinance authorizing the Streets Commissioner and Procurement Commissioner to enter into an agreement with Covanta Sustainable Solutions, pursuant to which Covanta will receive municipal solid waste to be collected by or on behalf of the city and transfer and dispose of that municipal solid waste. And an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code and Title of the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by adopting the 2018 edition of the International Plumbing Code as published by the International Code Council as the Philadelphia Plumbing Code, with additions, deletions, and other amendments thereto. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement on a portion of the parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Gerard Avenue, North 34th Street, and Zoological Drive, commonly known as 3400 West Gerard Avenue. And an ordinance constituting the 18th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the Mayor, the City Controller, and the City Solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the City of Philadelphia. And an ordinance constituting the 17th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the Mayor, the City Controller, and the City Solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes of the City of Philadelphia, sum or all of which may be used for the implementation of a revolving commercial paper program. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And an ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the repayment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions providing for obtaining the consent of the electors to increasing the indebtedness of the city. And an ordinance amending Section 3, Subparagraph F of an ordinance approved March 1, 1963, as amended, relating to agreements to administer employee retirement benefits for certain quasi-public agencies. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 44S by relocating the southeasterly House Line and curb line of 10th Street from Packer Avenue to Point Southwestwardly therefrom, and relocating the northwesterly House Line and curb line of Darien Street from Packer Avenue to Point Southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 15S by placing on the City Plan Alter Street from 17th Street to 18th Street. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize bicycle lanes on Lindbergh Boulevard between 58th Street and 65th Street. And an ordinance amending Chapter 193500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hospital Assessments to revise provisions relating to hospital assessments. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize bicycle lanes on Germantown Avenue from North Second Street to Master Street. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize a bicycle lane on North Second Street from Wood Street to Race Street, and making associated changes to parking regulations within the same limits, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. You have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our next order of business. Before we move on to the introduction of bills and resolutions, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge some very fine students who are here today from Stanton Elementary School, the civics class. We have a city law department that has a program where we actually partner with EM Stanton to teach our young people civics. And the teacher name is Mr. Bertaccio. Can they all just stand and be acknowledged, please? Those are our city... Those are our future councilmembers and mayors and state reps and senators. And hopefully, one of them may run for president. So, thank you, Council President.
Can he do it next year? All right, I'm sorry, I digress. Our next order of business, and welcome. Thank you all for being here. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blondo Reynolds Brown, who has some challenges with her voices today. So, on her behalf, Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, I offer three resolutions. And at the reading of the last resolution, could I be recognized, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman, and Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring the sustainable business network of Greater Philadelphia and its green stormwater infrastructure partners on the occasion of the Excellence in GSI Awards Ceremony.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing June 4th through June 8, 2019, as Philly Real Estate Week in the City of Philadelphia and celebrating its founder, Nicole Purvey.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating Jania Victor on her achievement as the first girl to play for a Philadelphia high school boys' baseball team.
And that will be on today's calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, in the audience today is Ms. Gianna Victor, who is the first girl to play for a high school boys' baseball team in Philadelphia. By the way, I'm envious of her. I couldn't make the boys' baseball team in my high school. And she's accompanied, by the way, by Napoleon Kincaid, neighborhood leader, sports... Neighborhood leader of the sports newspaper writer, and also by her dad, August Victor. So, we welcome all.
Thank you all.
And, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Also, on behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, due to other city council business, she would request leave of chambers from now and also to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions that come before us.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Councilwoman. Let the record reflect, these shall be granted. And Councilwoman will be voting aye on all bills, resolutions, and I think we have one amendment today. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce 12 bills, eight of which I believe are the administration bills, and two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker? Yes, please.
And an ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds. And an ordinance constituting the 17th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the Mayor, the City Controller, and the City Solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes. And an ordinance constituting the 18th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated General Airport Revenue Bond Ordinance, authorizing the Mayor, the City Controller, and the City Solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series or sub-series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue bonds or notes. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development properties located at 4910 Botanic Avenue, 5014 Gray's Avenue, 5027 Gray's Avenue, and 2639 South 58th Street. And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on Whitby Avenue between 52nd and 53rd Streets, both sides. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Summer Street, 32nd Street, Race Street, and Natrona Street. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to grant to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation a temporary construction easement on a portion of a parcel or parcels of land in and about the area bounded by Gerard Avenue, North 34th Street, and Zoological Drive, commonly known as 3400 West Gerard Avenue. And Bill Number 1... And an ordinance amending Chapter 14500 of the Philadelphia Code, Section 14516, entitled WST West Overlay District. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Citizens Bank of Pennsylvania for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And an ordinance amending Chapter 193500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Hospital Assessments to revise provisions relating to hospital assessments. And an ordinance authorizing the Director of Planning and Development on behalf of the city to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into a provider agreement with U.S. Bank National Association for the provision of custodial banking services to the City of Philadelphia.
Those 12 bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Bishop Mary Floyd Palmer on her appointment as the first female president of the Philadelphia Council of Clergy.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring State Representative Janes Robuck on his 50-year anniversary of his appointment as the first black student council president at University of Virginia.
And today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer three bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance amending Section 14502 of the zoning code entitled CTR Center City Overlay, Section 701 of the zoning code entitled Dimensional Standards, and Section 14702 of the zoning code entitled Floor Area Height and Housing Density Bonuses.
Verdict Committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Race Street, 17th Street, Vine Street, and 18th Street.
Verdict Committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes to authorize bicycle lanes on Germantown Avenue from North Second Street to Master Street.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I introduce one bill and offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Ryan Avenue from Leon Street to Crispin Street.
Verdict Committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring Lucy Nolan on her successes in Philadelphia and with Fox 29 News.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, today I offer two bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Henry Avenue, Ridge Avenue, Northwestern Avenue, the county line, Forbidden Drive, and Wise's Mill Road.
Verdict Committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ridge Avenue, Indiana Avenue, and Hunting Park Avenue.
Also referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, before I introduce my bills, I just want to know if it's okay if I have a personal... Take a moment of personal privilege to acknowledge on the balcony students who are here participating in the anti-gun violence rally from Universal Vere School and Tilden Middle School on the balcony. Could we just please give them a round of applause and acknowledge them for their leadership? I feel good about the future of this city seeing our young people involved in so many civic activities. Council President, I have six bills and three resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And an ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streets to Prohibit the Construction of Bay Windows and Balconies in and around the Point Breeze and Gray's Ferry areas of the city. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 15S by placing on the City Plan Alter Street from 17th Street to 18th Street. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Washington Avenue, 25th Street, Kimball Street, and 24th Street. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 44S by relocating the southeasterly House Line and curb line of 10th Street from Packer Avenue to Point Southwestwardly therefrom, and relocating the northwesterly House Line and curb line of Darien Street from Packer Avenue to Point Southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance amending Section 12901 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Stopping, Standing, or Parking Prohibited at Certain Places to permit overnight truck parking on South 11th Street between Catherine Street and Webster Street, and to establish parking regulations on the same portion of South 11th Street. And an ordinance amending Chapter 102000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of Three-Dimensional Printer to Manufacture Firearms to change the chapter title, add definitions, and add additional prohibitions on use of three-dimensional printers and prohibitions relating to the purchase or sale of components for and unlicensed manufacture of firearms.
Thank you. Those six bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution recognizing June 2 as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing June as Reentry Awareness Month in Philadelphia.
Also today's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution also naming King Sissing Avenue between 61st Street and Cemetery Avenue, Paulette Roan Place.
Next week's calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I know originally I said four bills. I actually have five bills for the record.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code and Title of the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by adopting the 2018 edition of the International Plumbing Code as published by the International Code Council as the Philadelphia Plumbing Code. And an ordinance granting permission to Esteban... And an ordinance granting permission to Esteban Guenez, owner and operator of the Los Protrilos food truck located in the right-of-way on the west side of 4200 block of G Street between East Hunting Park Avenue and East Bristol Street to install, use, and maintain certain electrical wires, conduits, and appliances in and under, in, under, and over the right-of-way on the 4200 block of G Street. And an ordinance authorizing 1201 North Franklin, doing business as the International Bar, to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1624 North Front Street. And an ordinance authorizing Antonio Perez to construct, own, and maintain a proposed exterior stairway at 1801 North Hancock Street. And an ordinance amending Chapter 9600 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Service and Other Businesses, by amending Section 9612, entitled Fences Around Automobile Wrecking Yards and Junk Yards and Buildings, and Section 9613, entitled Junk Dealers, to change the section title, add definitions, update requirements for waste handling facilities, licenses, and salvage transactions.
Those five bills just read by the chief clerk will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one bill and one non-privilege resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance continuing the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District, the Business Improvement District encompassing certain existing and future hotel properties within the boundaries of the city of Philadelphia, and continuing the Philadelphia Hospital Improvement Levy District Corporation to serve as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Verge the committee.
And a non-privilege resolution initiating action to continue a business improvement district encompassing certain existing and future hotel properties within the boundaries of the city of Philadelphia, known as the Philadelphia Hospital Improvement Levy District, and to continue the Philadelphia Hospitality Improvement Levy District Corporation as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association of the district.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two bills, one of which is on your behalf, and one privilege resolution that is co-sponsored by Councilmembers Reynolds Brown and Helen Gill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 3 Subparagraph F of an ordinance approved March 1, 1963, as amended, relating to agreements to administer employee retirement benefits for certain quasi-public agencies.
Verge the committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Streets to Authorize Placement of Wayfinding Signs in the Right-of-Way.
Stop signs!
Go ahead, Mr. Decker.
And a privilege resolution recognizing May 28, 2019, as Menstrual Hygiene Day, in honoring No More Secrets: Mind, Body, Spirit Incorporated, a sexuality awareness nonprofit organization whose mission is to decrease the silence and secrecy associated with the menstrual cycle by de-stigmatizing and normalizing societal behaviors, language, and attitudes related to menstruation and menstrual hygiene.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Dunn.
Morning, Council President. On my behalf, I have no bills or resolutions. On Councilwoman Gill's behalf, I have one privileged resolution. And on Councilman Talburgers' behalf, I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring the 25th anniversary of the Philadelphia Public School Notebook for its commitment to using local, independent, ambitious journalism as a tool to bring access to information to Philadelphia's public school community and to provide resources to those working for quality and equity in Philadelphia's public schools.
That will be on this week's calendar. And as Chair recognizes, Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have seven bills, two on your behalf, two co-sponsored by Councilmember Parker, and two non-privilege resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Traffic Code, to revise various provisions related to the on-street parking system. And an ordinance amending Section 11203 Subparagraph 3 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Sewer and Water Pipe and Other Underground Service, to authorize revision of the length of time during which a permit to maintain a plumber's ditch remains valid. And an ordinance amending Section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes, to authorize a bicycle lane on North 2nd Street from Wood Street to Race Street. And an ordinance amending Chapter 122900 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Contractor Parking, to revise the permit fee and the applicable penalties. And an ordinance amending Section 122809 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Civil Penalties and Costs, by amending penalties for certain parking, standing, or stopping violations. And an ordinance authorizing the Streets Commissioner and Precarment Commissioner to enter into an agreement with Covanta Sustainable Solutions, pursuant to which Covanta will receive municipal solid waste to be collected by or on behalf of the city. And an ordinance authorizing the Streets Commissioner and Precarment Commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Waste Management of Pennsylvania Incorporated, pursuant to which Waste Management will receive municipal solid waste to be collected by or on behalf of the city.
Is that it? Those seven bills just read in the record by the chief clerk will be referred to the appropriate committees.
And a non-privilege resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the south-central urban renewal area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1035 South Sixth Street, 1037 South Sixth Street, and 1028 South Fairhill Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Kensington North of Lehigh redevelopment area identified by house number and street address as 2250 East Cambria Street.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. On behalf of Councilwoman Cindy Bass, she offers one resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Chestnut Hill College on its 95th anniversary and continued commitment to providing students with a holistic education in an inclusive environment marked by academic excellence, personal and professional growth, service to one another, and to the global community.
And that will be on this week's calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is report some committee. And who's? Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Appropriations reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Appropriations, so which is referred Bill Number 190314, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Transfers of Appropriations for fiscal year 2019 from the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the Grants Revenue Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; to the General Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the Special Gasoline Tax Fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions. Respectfully reports it as considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. And as Chair again recognizes, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 190314.
Can I get a second? Thank you. You've been moved in probably second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 190314. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our report some committee. And our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bill just reported from committee with suspension of the rules has been deemed to have had its first reading calendar and will be on our second reading and final passage at our next council session. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are Bill Numbers 190195, 190420, 180937-A, and 190255. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to a longstanding commitment, I will have to be excused from council, but I wish to be recorded as voting aye on all bills and resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I need to make sure. We've got nine people here. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Let the record reflect that the Councilwoman will be voting aye on all bills and resolutions and amendment. Thank you. Before we consider these bills and resolutions on our final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. When your name is called, we'll go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light on the device turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we ask you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will have three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
Colleen McCauley. Commenting on 180936.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Clark and all city council members, thank you for your attention and action throughout the year to improve the lives and life chances of Philadelphia's children. I'm Colleen McCauley, the Health Policy Director at PCCY, a child advocacy and policy organization working on behalf of kids in the region. I'm also a nurse and the proud parent of a Philadelphia school district student. I am here to urge you to support Resolution 170408, to prohibit the suspension of elementary-age students in the district. Providing more support to our youngest students as well as support and training for teachers and school administrators is what's truly needed. I say this because suspension of kids who are 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 years old is most often just a symptom of larger underlying issues. Many of the reasons young children's behavior moves a school to suspend them are related to deprivation and trauma, such as unstable housing, not enough food to eat, violence in their homes or community. Rampant lead poisoning of babies throughout the city also causes behavioral problems and attention deficit problems that manifest when children become school age and is the likely cause for some young students to be suspended from school. Today you're considering another measure, Bill 108937, requiring all Philadelphia children to get screened for lead at ages 1 and 2. With 2,200 babies poisoned by lead in the city every year, I urge you to support this bill as well. At the Health Committee hearing on this bill in March, the bill's sponsor, councilperson Blondell Reynolds Brown, made a critical statement very much worth repeating. She said, "Many would be surprised to know that today more children are being poisoned by lead in the city of Philadelphia than in Flint, Michigan," which made national headlines in 2015 for its lead poisoning issues. There are 16 ZIP codes in Philadelphia covering nine of 10 council manic districts where more than 10% of our children screened have elevated blood lead levels. Screening babies for lead poisoning is important so we can connect them to the critical services like early intervention and high-quality early childcare services, supported in part by the soda tax, so we can try and mitigate the harm done by lead to children's intellect, development, and behavior, and prevent some of these kids from ultimately being suspended from elementary school. But I also want to urge you all to think about preventing babies from ever being poisoned by lead in the first place by helping get the lead out of their homes. Most babies in this city are poisoned by deteriorated lead-based paint in older rental properties. A bill unanimously passed out of the Health Committee in March to require properties to be tested. If we get lead out of babies' homes, they don't get poisoned. Their blood lead test will be negative, and most likely, fewer young children will be at risk for being suspended. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk to you.
Thanks for your testimony.
Maurice Sampson. Commenting on 180937A.
Good morning, Council President, members of the city council. I am here today to also speak in favor of the Blood Lead Levels Bill. This informing the parents and making certain that we are aware of the children and the potential of blood lead levels at both 12 and 24 months is essential if we want to catch the presence of lead before it does its serious damage, which is for life. The passage of this particular piece of legislation provides some real basic information for folks. Clean Water Action, the organization that I represent, we have for the last two years been out just talking to people, trying to inform people of just where the lead is that's in their lives. We have been working on the issue of dealing with lead in this city for a long time. In 1972, I was an urban studies student at Rutgers University and came across the river in order to hear about this wonderful program the Health Department had about lead poisoning in homes. It's more than 50 years ago. Had we set a goal then of 1/50 reduction of all the lead, it wouldn't even be a subject we'd be discussing today. We probably need to do that. Forty-year plan to get rid of lead is something that probably looks reasonable over 40 years. We can work every year to make it less, but in 40 years, we'll know that it's gone. Lead is not like a snake. It's not something that comes up and bites you. Lead is more like a hot stove that you don't know about. So we expose ourselves to it, and that's where the children get poisoned. We need, and we have considered, a whole suite of pieces of legislation that deal with lead, and that is wonderful. What we also need to do now is to focus on making certain that everybody knows where that lead is so that we don't have to read every 18 months about children being poisoned by lead. Thank you so much for your efforts here. I appreciate it. And we have full support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. George Gould. Can you hear? George Gould. There he is. Commenting on 180937A.
Good morning. My name is George Gould. I'm an attorney with Community Legal Services here in Philadelphia. I'm here to talk about Bill 180937, which would require blood lead testing of children in Philadelphia. I have been involved in the problems of lead-based paint since 1970 and have talked to councils about many of the issues. This bill, it's a very important bill, would do two things. It would require doctors treating children between 9 months and 21 months to test for lead blood lead levels. It would also require doctors treating children from between 21 and 72 months to also test for blood lead levels. So the requirement would be twice. There is a Board of Health has established a regulation. It would also require the Board of Health to establish regulations implementing this and to have special testing for adverse children. Doctors would have to report to the Department of Public Health. And the Department of Public Health would be required to conduct a public information campaign on this issue. According to a recent study by the Department of Public Health, only 28% of the children in Philadelphia were tested in accordance with the Department of Health recommendations, which are at age 1 and age 2. This bill is extremely important to the health of the children of Philadelphia. While Medicaid and CHIP both require blood lead level testing, the percentage of children tested is not very high. Childhood lead poisoning is a serious problem, as has already been mentioned. And I think everyone is well aware of this. And I think everyone is well aware of this. Even, excuse me, low lead levels, lead poisoning can cause serious problems, such as intelligent quotient deficiencies, reading and learning disabilities, impaired hearing, reduction of attention span, and hyperactivity and behavior problems. There are great costs also to society, medical treatment, long-term care, school fear, and reduced earnings. I would be remiss if I also didn't talk about Bill 180936, which would make a major change in the blood lead level in Philadelphia and would require preventive medicine, that is, requirement of legislative certifications in all rental properties.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Napoleon Kincaid.
Members of Philadelphia City Council, my name is Napoleon Kincaid. I'm a sports reporter for the Neighborhood Leader paper. And I'm here to, speaking in honor of Janaya Victor. As I stand here today, I'm proud to hold up a copy of my article of Janaya Victor that appeared on the front page a few weeks ago, matter of fact. I had a great honor to crack the story. She and I engaged in a conversation at a rec center, and I was talking to her about participating in an AAU girls' basketball league. And she mentioned the fact that she had attended practice with her baseball, high school baseball team. So first, I said, "Women, you mean softball, right? You didn't say baseball. You meant softball." And she said, "No, baseball." So it kind of registered that she was talking about a boys' baseball team. So first, I didn't want to believe it, you know, because I'm a reporter slash rec ball coach. So what I did, I said, "When's your next game?" So she invited me to her next game. And ladies and gentlemen, when I went out to South Philadelphia to watch her play for John Barcham Boys Baseball Team, I couldn't believe it. I stood there in a trance, because I'd never seen this in my 37 years being a sports reporter. I have covered lots of baseball games. I'd never seen a girl play baseball for a boys' baseball team. I'd never seen it. So I'm looking at her playing shortstop. When I tell you she plays shortstop like Ozzie Smith, with the stab, with the glove, with the throw, with the follow-through throw, I'm telling you, this girl can play baseball with the boys with no problem. I've never seen this before. The city of Philadelphia has to recognize this, because this is the second time in five years that a female baseball player is playing ball right here in this city for a boys' baseball team. This is the second female in the history of Philadelphia in the last five years since Monet Davis. Now, mind you, Monet Davis did not play high school baseball. She played for her little league team, you know? So for Janaya Victor to play for a high school boys' baseball team, to represent this city, is an honor.
No.
And as a reporter, I'm honored to know this young lady, because to watch her mannerism, her professionalism, especially on that baseball field, is remarkable. And she got two more years to go at John Barcham High School, playing for the baseball team. Two more years as the team's starting shortstop.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I hope you take this resolution very seriously, because this girl has made history in the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Decker. Coming up as a group, Nicole Zalkin, Tanaya, Kyla, Nyla, Dakara, Yanhu, and Nieska, commenting on 170408.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, city council. Thank you very much for the forum, and this very important forum, to have the voices of public Philadelphia education to be heard today. So we appreciate your time. My name is Nicole Zalkind, and I teach seventh and eighth grade language arts at Kirkbride Elementary School in South Philadelphia. And our classes here, excuse me, our classes here studied the impact that poverty has on their opportunity for an equitable education. Through the Need and Deed Network, we were able to partner with Helen Gimms' office, and through our research, found the incredible work that she's been doing with FairWorkWeek.org. We also support the movement in Philadelphia's Fight for Fifteen, to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour, because our students are living below the poverty line, many of them. I'm going to give my time now so that you can hear the personal testimony of some of our eighth-grade students from Kirkbride Elementary. Thank you very much.
My name is Tanaya Sun, and it's a pleasure for me to be standing here amongst you council members. I'm an eighth grader enrolled at Elizabete Kirkbride Elementary School, and here's my testimony. I am what's going to change the future. My generation will suffer the impact of the results of your generation's inability to provide fair pay and working conditions for my parents. My research tells me that you say, "We cannot raise the minimum wage because we fear the loss of revenue." This poor reasoning does not have data to back it up, and is made by people who never lived through the inner-city struggles that I do, rather enjoy private schools, gated communities, small classes, resources, and equipment that made their education not equal to mine. I am a young teenage girl living in the trenches of Philadelphia's public schools. I sit in a class of more than 30 students with broken, donated, outdated technology. I'm typing this testimony on a Chromebook that's missing the letters T, L, S, A, and a backspace. I am handed a torn textbook that still has the names of my older siblings and the inside cover. She graduated in 2004. The latest president in the social studies textbook is President Bush, Senior. The most recent road event is 9/11. Our black president isn't even represented in the materials you provide us. Why aren't I given the same opportunity and access to education as many other kids my age across the state? We learned that decisions like raising the minimum wage can only made in the Harrisburg at the state level. Why can't Harrisburg make the decision to give every student in the state an equitable education? I challenge you to take a stand, I challenge you to take a stand and hope to make a change. I'm asking you to fight for us. I promise that when I grow up, I'll be sitting in your seat, continuing to fight against poverty in the city that I love, the city of brotherly and sisterly love. Thank you.
If you want to, please state your name. Let me just ask, my understanding was that this was going to be three minutes total with all? Is everybody speaking three minutes? Is that the... Wait a minute.
They had signed two spaces, so that was three minutes, and this is three minutes.
Oh, so the rest, all the rest are three minutes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Please, go ahead. Please just state your name, too.
Nyla. Here are some experts, experts from some of my classmates' testimonies that tell their tales of living in poverty. I was at my aunt's house one summer day, and my cousin and I heard gunshots, ran around the corner to my uncle's house, and on the step was my, ran around the corner to see my uncle on the steps bleeding. Poverty affects my life because people don't know when to put guns down. It's hard for me to concentrate on school because I have lost in my, lost or on my mind all day.
My name is Jakara, and this is my story. I was born after my parents immigrated to the U.S., knowing no English had an impact on my ability to work. I always knew my family was living in poverty, but felt thankful because I knew there was others living in the worst conditions. It directly impacted me when my brother got a virus and was in the ICU in a medically-induced coma. He had no health insurance, and my family had to work to seek government assistance.
My name is Kyla, and my testimony is, it's a struggle, one that we have to go through every single day, but we do our best and work as hard as we can so that we're able to make a living. But sometimes, hard work just isn't enough, because hard work doesn't determine your paycheck in the city.
Thank you.
My name is Nadeline, and this is my testimony. When I was about eight years old, I realized I was living in poverty. Even though we always worked at the kitchen, even though we always had food to eat every night and we never slept with a hungry stomach, my dad was always at the kitchen table at night calculating how we wasted money. We are a family of four people, and the only person that works is my dad. He makes $7.50 an hour. I believe that's not okay.
Thank you.
My name is Allison Chang, and as I continue to grow up, I struggle with understanding the reason behind poverty, but I do understand the feeling. I don't believe we are in the worst condition, but I do ask myself what a school like that is. I will want to fight for them, too. Isn't every student supposed to get an equal education?
Thank you.
My name is Yan Wei. I learned that stress can impair brain development, and that if children want to do well in school, that they should have a low-stress home environment. I come to school with no food in my belly, and the school lunch isn't great. I'll eat something. Then I go home with little to no food in my belly. That is not a low-stress environment. What can we do? This is poverty. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Mr. Decker.
Emmanuel Bussey. Commenting on 190195.
I rise in favor of Bill number 19... Oh, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Emmanuel Bussey, for the record. I yield in favor of 190195. Just want to remind everybody that I'm sent here by 65 individuals, 33 community organizations, including Shante Love, Mel Wells, Rochelle Bilal, Anton Moore, Albert Littlepage. I'm also sent here by community activists like Marie Patterson, Wayne Williams, Astoria Viva. So when you see me here speaking to you, I've already met with 40 to 65 people on Sunday, getting my instructions on what to communicate to you guys. First, I want to congratulate all of our elected officials that were re-elected, especially our DKOD elects, the nine, the seven, the eight of you. I want to congratulate you guys on a job well done. I will also say that, again, the reason why we're so hard on city council and so critical of city council is not to be demeaning of city councils, because we believe that this is the best city council that the city has ever had, by far. It is one of the best city councils in the nation. There's a lot of skepticism, a lot of cynicism around in the city because of the Trump era and because of some elected officials have gotten into some trouble. But make no mistakes about it, this is a very tough job and a very serious job that you guys have to do. And it's easy to sit back and criticize you guys. It's easy to sit back and say what you haven't done and what you shouldn't have done, should not have done. But what we try to do is get behind you guys, the good guys, those of you that mean well and have well intentions, because though not perfect, your intentions are good and your intentions are honorable, for the most part. And I think that if this city gets behind you in a meaningful and significant way, you guys can do some groundbreaking stuff in the second-largest city on the East Coast. I want to say that again. This is the second-largest city on the East Coast with a GDP of $445 billion. That's our gross domestic product. If we were a country, we would be one of the strongest countries in the nation with a GDP of $445 billion. And I challenge council to do those meaningful things, to move the city forward in terms of violence, in terms of funding anti-violence groups on the ground that's doing this work, non-traditional groups, not the pines, not the temples, but put money on the ground. I challenge you also to move that legislation and to move to take back our resources, like the parking authority. It's a $60 million entity in profit in the parking authority just from on-street parking. I think it should come back under, and all I'm advocating for is that you guys control the parking authority. I'm not saying change it, switch it around, flip it. I'm just saying, we're, as Philadelphia, is more comfortable with you guys controlling the destiny and direction of the parking authority than people in Harrisburg. So two things that I'm sitting here to ask you guys to do is to fight for anti-violence groups, non-traditional groups, on the ground, to get funding, a line item budget in the mayor's budget. It's enough of you guys to say, "Hey, Mr. Mayor, we need this funding." And it's also enough of you guys to take back valuable city resources, like on-street parking. At least bring it to the floor so you can have a full discussion, so Kirk can talk about it, so Dom can talk about it. Bring that bill to the floor so we can have full discussion, full transparency in terms of our city resources. I thank you guys, and again, I appreciate the work you do.
Thank you. Mr. Decker. Commenting on 181063.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Murphy. I'm with Physicians for Social Responsibility, and I'm here to talk about number 181063. The conversion of fracked gas to liquid reduces the volume to increase capacity to export for corporate profit. The name of the Passian Energy Center implies that it will provide local energy, but Philadelphians are not fools. The extracted fossil fuels will be brought into our city by an industry that aggressively tears into our state land, demolishes property and communities through falsified claims of eminent domain, and wreaks havoc on the lives of Pennsylvanians, as it makes its way to Philadelphia, only to be exported globally for profit. Corporate profit should not be permitted to leave Philadelphians in the wake of additional noise the facility will bring. Corporate profit should not be permitted to leave Philadelphians, living the rest of their lives in the realistic fear of a potential deadly explosion. Corporate profit should not be permitted to pose as job creators when a pipeline explosion in 2014 caused an LNG storage tank to leak, injuring multiple workers, forcing 1,000 residents in the two-mile radius to evacuate, and causing $72 million in property damage. Corporate profit should not be permitted to allow what happened just 10 years before the aforementioned accident, when an LNG explosion killed 30 people and destroyed the port infrastructure. Corporate profit should not be permitted to allow what happened just a generation prior to ours, when 128 people died and at least 200 were injured. The same corporate profit should not be permitted to drive an industry linked to health impacts ranging from low birth weights to asthma, birth defects, to what seems to be clusters of rare cancers in children living near elements of the same industry. Yes, this project, named the Passian Energy Center, is part of the same industry that is linked to communities just a few hours west from here, suffering from Ewing sarcoma and other rare cancers, taking the lives of children and youth a few hours west from here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Obana Hagens. Commenting on 180729.
Actually, I have to change that, if you don't mind. The young people speaking about poverty, actually, I wanted me to change this. I want to speak on, my name is Obana Hagens, for the record. I'm speaking on 190255, introduced by Councilmember O'Neill. An ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code relating to sidewalk sales by adding new provisions prohibiting sidewalk sales in the 10th Council-matic District and making other conforming amendments, all under certain terms of conditions. I think, to me, that's hurting poor people, because vending is a way that a lot of stores started. I think it was the Walton family, the father, who started as a vendor, and now you see where Walmart is today. So I totally 100% oppose this ordinance, in the name of poor people in Philadelphia, for them to have an opportunity, in order for them to have an opportunity to survive and to win. For them to have an opportunity to survive and to one day be a Walmart of the world. Again, my name is Obana Hagens. Thank you.
Joe Denahell. Commenting on 190195.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I, unlike the earlier speaker, know your criminal intent when you unanimously voted the bill on top of my stolen home. That is a clear action that nobody can take back. This is official decree of the people, remandamis po' wanto, and not as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, governor, and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Gaysburg, Arlington, and countless cemeteries are filled with people who perform their known duty or task. Duty does not give a damn if you're having a bad day. Duty does not give a damn if you don't feel like it. Would people volunteer to serve overseas, knowing their government was stealing their neighbor's homes? Officials avoiding their known duty or task must be prosecuted to avoid or to prove to the veterans that their sacrifices are honored. Why has Attorney General not investigated or prosecuted the numerous complaints filed by me? Why has the sheriff, the police, or the state police not arrested any official for theft of my home or theft of my just compensation? The Constitution's require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of laws, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. 42 USC, 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987. 18 USC, 241, 242, 2381, 2384. PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 28. 26 PACSA, 703, 705, 708, 709, 711, 712, 713, 716, 902, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call on the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations to investigate, prosecute all involved in the theft and the legal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue. The denial of God-given 42 USC 1982 property rights for 25 years is extraordinary oath violating and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty to act any more than a fireman can refuse to fire a fire. The sovereign people require oath constitution law being enforced, and jail is required for all who violate oath constitutional law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow all of this monumental corruption. According to my phone, I did three minutes. According to this clock, I did two minutes after. So somebody needs to pay the guy due to this clock problem.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Sarah Stroman.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Stroman, and I'm a volunteer with Fair Districts PA, a nonpartisan grassroots organization working to end gerrymandering of Pennsylvania congressional and state legislative districts. We have over 8,000 supporters in Philly and thousands more across the state. I'm here today to express support for Resolution Number 190420. The resolution affirms the need to end gerrymandering in Pennsylvania by creating an independent citizens' commission for state legislative and congressional redistricting. This resolution does not take a position on how municipal districts are drawn. Over the last several months, we have conducted constituent visits with council members to share with them why we are so passionate about this issue and to answer their questions, including a briefing on April 29th. Nearly all members we have met with have expressed their support for this effort. Gerrymandering is a way of disenfranchising voters by drawing voting districts to give an unfair advantage to political parties and to particular legislators. Current law allows Pennsylvania legislators to draw the state legislative and congressional districts in which they and members of their party seek election. This direct conflict of interest has led to Pennsylvania becoming one of the most gerrymandered states in the entire country, with the most dysfunctional legislature aside from Congress, which suffers the same ills. The fundamental problem with gerrymandering is that it allows legislators to choose their voters instead of the other way around. This is undemocratic. Regardless of which party is manipulating voting districts, there are serious consequences for Philadelphians, including diminished electoral competition, governance dominated by polarization and gridlock instead of problem-solving, and voter disenfranchisement and apathy. We don't vote because we think our votes don't matter. A lawsuit in 2018 provided a temporary fix for Pennsylvania's congressional districts but did nothing for our state legislative districts. The long-term solution for ending gerrymandering is an independent citizens' commission for state legislative and congressional redistricting that must follow strict rules for fairness and transparency. States that have created such commissions have seen notable improvement in electoral competitiveness, legislative compromise, and voter trust. To date, 310 other municipalities have passed a fair districts resolution, like the one being voted on today, including four of PA's five major cities, notably Pittsburgh. Their governing bodies, which comprise both Republican and Democratic majorities, represent 56% of the state's population. It's time for Philadelphia City Council to pass a fair districts resolution to make that 70%. The citizens of PA have had enough. Thank you.
Justin Deloach. Commenting on 190420.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President Clark and all the council members present. My name is Justin Deloach. Thank you for offering me a opportunity to speak, make a public statement as a representative of Fair Districts PA. I'll keep it short and sweet. We appreciate councilmembers Jones, Gem, Squilla, and Green hopefully passing this resolution for listening and responding to the constituents of Philadelphia with an open ear to pass this resolution for a statewide citizens' commission for legislative and congressional redistricting. This is a significant step forward for voting rights for the people of PA. I'm hopeful PA will join California in this practical and empowering step forward for everyday people like us to help ensure that our constituents' rights to one person, one vote becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Decker. And we will now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, if you could please read the title of 190195. A resolution confirming council's agreement with a proposed budget for expenditures from the non-recording fee sub-fund of the Housing Trust Fund relating to affordable housing. Oh, you got it? Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move that Resolution Number 190195 be withdrawn.
Been moved to probably second, that 190195 be withdrawn. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. 190195 is withdrawn. Mr. Decker? 1904220. A resolution supporting the creation of a citizens' commission for legislative and congressional redistricting. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? 190420 is adopted. Mr. Decker? 180937A. An ordinance amending Chapter 6200 of the Philadelphia Code and title preventative medicine to establish requirements for the testing of blood lead levels in children. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll. Councilwoman Blackwell? Councilman Dom? Councilman Green? Councilman Greenlee? Councilwoman Gem? Councilman Heenan? Councilman Johnson? Councilman Jones? Councilman O'Neill? Councilman O? Councilwoman Parker is voting aye. Councilwoman Gunner Sanchez? Councilwoman Reynolds Brown is voting aye. Councilman Squilla? Councilman Taubberger? Council President Clark? Aye. Councilwoman Sanchez leave her vote?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla? I think that gets us up to sixteen. I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Give information. I think before the councilwoman excused herself for council business outside of the chambers, she voted in the affirmative aye on all bills and resolutions.
Cool. Thank you, Councilman. So that would be seventeen, sixteen. Ayes are sixteen and ahs are zero. Majority of all members present voting affirm that the bill passes. Mr. Decker? 190255. An ordinance amending Section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code relating to sidewalk sales by adding new provisions prohibiting sidewalk sales in the 10th Council-Matic District. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer an amendment to Bill Number 190255. The amendment has been circulated to all members.
Thank you. It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor of the amendment to 190255? Say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. 190255 has been amended and will be placed on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions? A resolution honoring the sustainable business network of Greater Philadelphia and its green stormwater infrastructure partners on the occasion of the Excellence of GSI Awards Ceremony, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. A resolution recognizing June 4th through June 8, 2019, as Philly Real Estate Week in the city of Philadelphia and celebrating its founder, Nicole Purvey, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Chair can recognize Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution congratulating Janie Victor on her achievement as the first girl to play for a Philadelphia high school boys' baseball team, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution recognizing and honoring Bishop Mary Floyd Palmer on her appointment as the first female president of the Philadelphia Council of Clergy, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution recognizing and honoring State Representative James Roebuck on his 50-year anniversary of his appointment as the first black student council president at University of Virginia, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell. Chair can recognize Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution honoring Lucy Nolan on her successes in Philadelphia and with Fox 29 News, introduced by Councilman Heenan. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution recognizing June 2 as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that resolution is adopted. A resolution recognizing June as Reentry Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson. Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
Been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution recognizing May 28, 2019, as Menstrual Hygiene Day and honoring No More Secrets: Mind, Body, Spirit Incorporated, a sexuality awareness nonprofit organization whose mission is to decrease the silence and secrecy associated with the menstrual cycle by destigmatizing and normalizing societal behaviors, language, and attitudes related to menstruation and menstrual hygiene, introduced by Councilwoman Parker. Been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution is adopted. And a resolution honoring the 25th anniversary of the Philadelphia Public School Notebook for its commitment to using local, independent, ambitious journalism as a tool to bring access to information to Philadelphia's public school community and to provide resources to those working for quality and equity in Philadelphia's public schools, introduced by Councilman Dom on behalf of Councilwoman Gem. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
On behalf of Councilwoman Gem, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. And, behalf of Councilwoman Gem, it's adopted. Thank you. And a resolution recognizing and honoring Chestnut Hill College on its 95th anniversary and continued commitment to providing students with a holistic education in an inclusive community marked by academic excellence, personal and professional growth, service to one another, and to the global community, introduced by Councilman O on behalf of Councilwoman Bass. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Councilwoman Bass, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved to probably second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. And that is adopted. There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Any speeches on behalf of the majority? All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stay in adjourn until Thursday, June 6, 2019, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved to probably second. The council stay in adjourn until Thursday, June 6, 2019, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Remind council members, 2:00 p.m. committee at a whole, school district meeting, as required by this Home Rule Charter. Thank you all very much.